...budget workshop on February 13, 2020. Wish I had. First up, budget discussion regarding the proposed this year's 2021 budget. The Land Trust is first up. And what I can gather, it's the pages 16 and 17, basically. I don't know if it has a specific. Yeah. Brian, could you maybe go through all the upcoming expenditures for the Land Trust?
Yep, so the expenditures, they'll probably be able to speak better than that. I can kind of update you on the balances and those type of things.
Yeah, I meant the interest payment, the principal payments.
Yep.
So. So I saw that's page 17, right? Which is debt service.
Yep. So I can kind of give you a summary. We have the 2012, we took the bond out. That's a $75,000 payment in debt service. And then the 2019 bond is $174,000. So we're at $249 in debt services.
When is that 2012 expire?
What was the total you gave for the land payment? It will be.
So there's two. There's one that's 75, which is the older one.
Yeah, 74.
And then one 74 for $249 total. That's payments due in 2021. To answer your question, the 2012 bond will expire 2031. And then the 2019 will expire 2034.
2031, what was the other?
2034. So the citizens' account currently, after the reimbursement, because we received that $18,000 reimbursement from DM and put that back in the citizens' account. That will bring the balance up to 53. And that's going from December, so that's from December 31st. So they might have had some expenditures coming since then that I'm not accounting for, but we kind of use December 31st as a benchmark because it's halfway through the year. It's a little easier than aging, you know, seven months.
So 53,000 in the citizens' account?
Yep.
And now that's your operating, right? Is that the operating?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Any other accounts?
Yep, then there's the Webster account, which is for man purchases. That's got 641,000.
You might need to borrow some money this year. Anyway, just kidding. Any other stuff, Brian?
So, and then, you know, as you know, to the CIP. We've been funding them through the CIP.
Yep.
I think the council elected to decrease it last year, but the budget got rejected.
Right.
So it went from 15 to 10. So there's currently, this budget is 10.
Yeah, that's through the tax stamps, through the clerk.
Correct, yep. And they've been fully funded this year.
It was 15 last year?
Yes, because the budget, in 19 it was, so yes.
And again, Webster, what's that?
It's totally one.
That's restricted for land purchases. That's the proceeds from the bond, the 2019 bond. So generally, what we do, just a quick background, is we will usually take out bands, which are one-year interest-only loans, as they're purchasing property, so that we don't have to start paying principal right away. So on like a $2 million bond, we don't want to take out $2 million when they're only going to buy, say, 100,000, 200,000 in properties. So we'll piece together bonds. We did that for several years, and then the day came where we couldn't roll over the bond anymore, our band, so we had to go out to bond. So we did that last year.
Now, you gave us a couple pages here. I don't know if you want to start with the budget stuff.
Yeah, the overview.
We're just getting this tonight, so.
Yeah, we had provided that last year, and we just updated it a bit. But I did have to mind one class that it would be celebrating 20 years of the Land Trust next year, and this year, in August. And at the Crown Farm, which is a preserve that we culled on in September 2018. And that small piece of property that was owned by the town that was completed to us, which was that one triangle piece, it was less than an acre. That was completed, and we now have a parking lot in there. That's as far as it can, for now. They'll finish it in the spring. But I don't know if you've been by there, if you go by Tom Cog Road, you'll see it.
Not down that end here. I haven't been down that end in a while.
Just north of where Tom Cog Valley Road was at. So that's going to be very exciting, that we're involving the Constitution Commission in historic district. The.
Other town.
There's a Native American cemetery on the property. We're hoping that we'll get history file on the property from the former owner.
How many friends do you know, do they have, you know, I was just curious.
You know, have any friends who?
Yeah.
We have a lot.
We don't have.
We have a numbered list. We just have an email in.
Glass.
Certain things.
Not formal, not a formal membership.
It's just.
Right, right. We do that.
And if you could please, I would sound like a lot of me. However, so I don't know if you have any questions on that. We're really struggling to try to get this funded into the same format as the town budget, where we can show each year's budget, and then the current year, we can show what we budgeted, and then the year to date. And then what we're proposing.
Good job.
We're not afraid, and like, yeah.
Well, it's pretty good.
Brian keeps trying. We're working on it.
But that's good.
So we've proposed some property expenses, some operating expenses, and come up with something that's very close. And that includes 15,000 from the town real estate tax, which is what you put in the CIP or whatever, show that we have. That's basically what we're requesting, is 15,000. Our account fluctuates, what raises. I mean, in August, I got the citizens' account statement, and it was $17,000 instead of $9,000.
Of course.
That was 53.
And by the following month. By the following month, we had, I don't know, like 15,000.
That's where.
Very similar. Yeah, maybe things were stabilized in some form.
You're doing a lot with grants, too.
Yeah, the $3,000 grants that show up in 1718, those are through DM. They're called small three other ones. And they've been sort of suspended for a while. So I don't know why they're going to become active again.
You know why?
No, I don't know. But if you go back into the history of that, it was, it's administered by DM. The money comes from DOD, because it was negotiated to give to towns when you're 95. How old is it? So when, because you're 95, that's why it's going to take a swan out. They put money into towns to.
They should, we have more ways than.
In 1920.
Good point.
That's the reimbursement from our square project, which is $100,000 grant, which was technically given to the town. So we spent that much out of our account, and it has been reimbursed and replaced in our account. Going forward, we are not, the note of the law explains that we will not have enough in our account to finish out the project and get reimbursed. So we are counting on it coming from town funds, which technically is a town grant. And then the reimbursement will go directly back in. We submitted for our $18,000 reimbursement in July, and it was received in September. We expect to get permitted and have the work done in the fall, so that well before the fiscal year is out, we should submit and be reimbursed, so the town can balance out through the town.
So we generally do that for all grants. You know, if we have a grant letter award, you know, that, and I spoke with the auditors at length about this, as long as we have a grant award in house, we can put up the money, knowing that we're going to get reimbursed 100% of it. So that's not unusual.
So a large portion of your revenue comes from two solar projects, $35,000?
Yeah. The Atlantic Solar, the $10,000, I believe, made the only one time. The $20,000 from Southern Sky is in a formal agreement, which took place because we had an easement on the property where they wanted to build, so we negotiated to move the easement, so that they could maximize their.
That was on 91.
So they'll be paying yearly?
That was on 91, right?
2017.
Yes. So yearly or not? Sharon asked, is this yearly? The $20,000 should be yearly for, I think it's 25 years.
Yeah, I've seen that. I've seen that a lot, it's because I tour.
It's all like. So they're done now?
Yeah.
I understand, or they're running trailers or like.
Oh, they're not writing for the last, it's actually turned on?
Oh, it's turned on.
It will?
It was turned on in December.
Okay.
They opened the nuts up and running. They're just clearing out, and I'm sure doing the unfinished stuff.
Well, they must. Yeah, they must have landscaped it to do it in the spring, because they can't do it in the winter.
Just to clarify, Brian, the technically, with the budget not being approved last year, did it revert to 10?
No, because it reverted to the prior year, which the prior year was 15.
Oh, that was 15.
It got decreased last year.
Oh, okay.
We, but then it got rejected.
Right.
So everything stayed the same. So, yeah. Essentially, everything that was done in the budget process last year was all for now.
Well, if it stays the same, maybe we'll get more folks out to vote for the budget. Can only hope. It would be sad if the budget goes down, and then we're working on a budget from three years ago. It's crazy.
People don't come out, just.
Well, the tricky thing that's going to happen this year, too, is because of the revow, it's going to revert back to the old nobody, too. So their taxes are going to go up.
What? Yes. No, wait a minute.
Not the 2068.
Well, if the budget gets rejected.
Oh, right, if it gets rejected.
It gets rejected, yeah. But the thing is, in the alternate budget, you still keep the school expense, which is 100% of the increase.
Right.
So they're still going to see the same increase in the alternate budget, because it's $1.2 million increase, or now it's actually with the decreases they made last night. Our entire increase to the budget is attributed to the school, which will still stay in the alternate budget. So I don't think there's going to be much relief at all.
And if they voted down, they will have the higher nobody on top of the assessments going up.
Well.
Wait, wait.
Yeah, I don't, I don't. I think we would have the same tax levies, so we would have to decrease the mill rate. Yeah, because then we would have a huge excess of.
That would be crazy.
Which wouldn't make sense.
Right, right, okay. All right, we're not going back to the old.
Right, right, right.
The camera's on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we discount what we just said the last five minutes.
Yeah, yeah, I think I misspoke that.
That's okay.
We would have to decrease that mill rate to equal the, yeah, whatever we needed to equal last year's operating budget.
Yeah.
We can just.
School wants to be over the.
Right, yeah, well, we still would be.
The bottom line is that is a school. The political reality is that. The charitable budget gives about, I think Lisa said it, about three tries. And the Hopkins budget that we voted in June, officially starts to like first, so that. The council, we probably should have really pushed for passage of budget last year. We have a political responsibility to, we believe in the town budget, to vote and promote that as much as we can. And the fact is that we do have the revow. People are very anxious about it. I hear people talking about it, multiple people talking about it, whether they like it or not. That is a political reality. This town is, this town is in a political reality that the school budget is really big. That's another political reality. And we have to, we are politically, enact politically, to deal with that, because what's going to happen to town government is, I see, continued problems of doing some of the stuff we might think we need to do, because people reject the budget. They can't get the charitable budget on the line, they go out to the town. And that's the pattern, and the Hopkins budget's the last one up. So we have to think accordingly, and at the appropriate time, after the charitable budget is decided, finally decided, we're going to have to move and see what we can to sustain town government. And as a group, and try, want to sell it, and to talk to some of the opinion movers and shakers in this town. And I do think politically, which I don't apologize for, because if you're going to be in government, you have to think politically.
Brian, on the debt service, are those fixed rates on that stuff?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. For the.
Absolutely, yeah.
For the charitable?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you guys have anything else, first? Do you have any further notes for the Land Trust, various?
Yes.
I would leave you at 15,000. Yes, I would like to leave at 15,000.
Yes. Well, I mean, we voted last year to reduce it, right?
Actually, not to do that. But not only that.
It's no effect on them. If we went to 10 and it failed, then they'd get 15. If we limit it to 15 and it fails, they still get 15, so. We still, we still want to vote.
That's not correct.
That's reality.
No, that's not correct. Yeah, I naturally do.
What was the steam for last year?
Reduce it to 10.
We reduced it to 10, because the budget failed, so it went to the 15 prior.
Okay, didn't fail, lazy business.
So if it fails again, it's going to be 15, because the reduction wouldn't have taken effect.
Anyway, I would like to see it back to 15, because I think there's a great deal of work that the Land Trust is doing with the new pieces of property that you voted.
I'm at the 10, but anyway, that's me. You don't mean, you don't mean, cheap skate.
There's going to come a point when it'll probably get reduced, but for now, it is what it is.
Yeah.
You guys want to make a consensus, and I'll be chief, and you guys can do what you want.
Okay.
15.
15.
15.
All right, I think we're good. Thank you, Marilyn and Cindy.
Be careful, I was a little. So, yeah, I mean, I suppose we're younger, you have something to do with discouragement when another we young. Well, I mean, there's sprays and things, squirt on these. There should, you really should. Biolays, you know? Yeah. Bye, guys.
Thank you.
Hello, Liz. Page 10 and 11, folks with a tax assessor. Any questions on page 10? Okay, page 11, compensation and salary, any questions there? I just had one quick question on the health and dental, went down.
Yep, so I can speak to that unless you. So we had the senior court position was previously a family, and now it's single coverage.
Oh, was you ever a family, yeah?
No, we, it was two years ago, so it was the previous employee. So it was back.
Okay. The only question I had on that section. Anything on the services?
Yes. I wonder why it's so low.
I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
But all of it, why everything is lower? Actually, I'll just go by mine, so line 5065, contract services. You're estimating lower this time than last year.
We moved the Conica bill last year to.
Moved what?
We moved the Conica bill to printing and copying.
Oh.
So it's just, it's more of a reallocation. If you look at the bottom line between supplies and maintenance and services, there's really minimal impact. I think every year, we kind of try to realign it to where it's actually being spent.
Oh, so it moved down to printing and copying, some of it?
Some of it did, correct. And then, and then it went down also, because the Conica bills are cheaper than they were previously.
And then dues and fees are. Why actual 1819 was so much lower, and now it's back up again to the 680? Or 715, I'm sorry.
It's the Rhode Island Association of Assessors, International Assessors Association, Rhode Island Prisons of Licensing, so it's.
The licensing is due every other year.
Okay, that makes sense.
Makes perfect sense.
And the education is down. You were at 1,000, now you're doing 750.
The, well, now that I have the certification, I'll require less education, and just more renewal education for people not up to date.
Where do you vote for that for updates?
I do a lot of it online, but the Assessor Association offers it during our meetings as well. So that's why I try.
And your meetings are in Rhode Island?
Yes.
Yeah, because it's the Rhode Island Assessor, okay.
Correct. But I'm also a member of the International Assessor Association. Most of their studies are online.
Okay. I also wanted to ask about supplies, line 5390.
Yeah, maintenance.
I wanted to know why supplies were so low in 1920.
We moved postage from general government, and now it's under the tax assessor, supplies?
And those are our envelopes, pre-stamped envelopes, because we do a lot of mailing between senior exemption, tangibles.
And it was that way for decades, you know?
Okay.
Okay.
And then.
Okay, how many do we got? Then next is a tax assessor, any question?
Yeah, I have a question about the 3400 line. Your data is so huge, it didn't look like that happened in the past, so what is that?
That is the land use change tax penalty. If somebody is in the farm, forest, and open space program, and they haven't met their 15-year commitment, and they decide to do something different than farm, forest, open space program.
Or sell it.
Sell it, subdivide it, what have you.
It kind of breaks the contracts of this penalty.
It does, there's a penalty, and we collect it. And basically, it's equal to tax savings they received in the past.
You know, one of the things I thought before when I was looking at the assessor's records is that you've done a greater war on farm, forest, and open space for having more people pay up to date, and so we have less revenue on that. On the penalty, the line above that, the open space penalty is less, because you seem to be right on top of all the farm, forest, the land use penalties. And people seem to not be being late or having a problem. So I really appreciate that, that's great.
Anything else on page 11? I think that's it, Liz. Thank you, good to see you. Mary Lynn, page 12 and 13.
Oh, Mary Lynn.
Anything on page 12?
Yeah, I have a question. On Mary Lynn's salary of the collector, the medical insurance is nothing. Obviously, that, I mean, is that because? You know, Mary's.
Yeah, that's why. Yeah, I wonder how that works.
I just don't get it.
Because he gets it.
Right. Because that's within, is that because it's within the municipality?
Yes.
He isn't considered a separate employee, so to speak? Oh, I know you are. I'm aware you are.
It's written in most of the contracts.
It's written in the contracts on that.
If they get it from the town, then they don't. From their spouse.
Right, I just wondered about that. Thank you.
Okay, anything else, I think that's that. Page 12, top of page 13, compensation salary, anything there? I just had a quick question around the health and dental, that one up.
So two years ago, it was Rita, and she was single, and now it's, and now it's family.
Anything else on compensation and salary? Okay, services, anything on the services?
Yeah, dues. Why they're budgeted, why they're budgeted for 200, I guess. Went halfway through, already done 192. Should it put, shouldn't it be up in the 3?
No, because not everything gets paid incrementally. You know, sometimes you pay annual fees upfront, like dues and fees generally. You know, you pay it once a year.
Okay, but you spent more than that. In prior. In prior years than 200. I'm just asking why you're lower than, you know, that's all.
I guess not every fee is due a year.
I don't know why, it just depends, I'm trying to think back. As prior employee, you could do different things, but.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's true. You might do different things.
Right.
Okay. And.
Anything else on the services?
Yeah.
Okay, supplies, maintenance, and operations?
And postage, why is postage down when we spent 1700 in 1819? No, we spent 1700, 1819, and 1812. Yeah, we've spent 1712. So I don't know, I just.
Postage is down because in the past, postage also included doing the mailings for the bills. And now we've given the bills an entire line item. So it comes out, we blocked it out, so you guys know exactly what the bills cost. So we're not trying, before in the past, Rita would take X amount through that, and then for the mailing of the bills, she would take it out of postage. And so now we have, now it's all on one line item, and has to do the whole shebang, print the bills, mail them out, that includes everything.
Okay.
So it just moved from that line down to tax.
That's all, it just moved.
Okay.
And the vision rates went up, generally. They go up every year, and this is two years' worth of increases.
Anything else on the supplies, maintenance, and operations?
No.
Okay. Tax collector revenues?
No, we're.
Tax sales.
What sales are?
Looks like the run rate's pretty good through half the year, anything? All right, next is the tax sales expenses and revenues, pass-throughs there.
Thank you, thank you.
Minister of Commerce.
Minister of Commerce. Mary Lynn's Minister of Commerce, okay, that's page 43, 44. Page 43, before we started, I'd asked Brian why the clerk was getting more than the judge. Seems like a valid question. Brian, maybe you can just, oh, actually, I think I was talking to Bill. Explain why that is. Explain why that is.
Work. Well, I mean, it's more than that. It's, I guess, whatever they make per day, it's certain contractual time, you know?
It's just contractual.
Do you recognize, I mean, I know that the court's supporting, yeah.
It's just contractual, that's what it says in the contract for her to make that.
Yeah, but it's based on, I think, what she makes and how many days she's allocated to it.
She does one, right, she does one day a week, eight hours.
So it's a full day for the whole year.
For the whole year.
Right, so that's what they say.
Time served, time served contractual.
Yeah, the contractual rate is, yes.
Yep, yep.
So that's all. Page forty-four, expenses on the municipal court, any questions there? Okay, revenue, I guess.
Why is revenue down to thirty-three instead of forty?
We just looked at it for the past years and we're trying to get a more handle on it. It all equates somehow the tickets are bidding. And so, you know, it's, that's where it all stems from. You write more, we get more money.
So people are paying...
So drive fast. That's a moral estimate.
So people are being better about it, so we're getting more tickets. And there's fewer people who are doing this. So that's why, we are trying to get a better handle on it, yeah, that's how.
Now, the police has a piece of this or not anymore?
No.
Police don't reflect this in revenue on their end? They used it years ago.
No, don't, I think they, no.
Not anymore?
I don't think, what's the fee they get back through?
The state administrative fee.
So it's not reflected in the...
Okay, right.
That seems reasonable, Mary Lynn.
Okay.
See, she didn't even have to take off her coat.
No.
Chris Ryan. What's up? Page eighteen and nineteen, I see G I S.
So nice to see you, you didn't go anywhere. Yeah, we wanted to stay right here.
Questions, Chris will find himself here on page eighteen. Page nineteen, compensation sound, any questions there? Okay, and then any under services, any question there?
Just a question, contract services did go up, what were they going up for?
So, vision went up two thousand. So, the contract services made up of basically all the town line, anything tech-related, whether it's cloud services, whether it's like building and zoning software, the tax collector software, tax collection software. So it's a combination of probably thirty things. And of those things, generally from year to year, they'll be, at least every other year, we'll see a slight increase. But this is two years, again, of increases and we're seeing vision, rates went up two thousand. Our email service, we're actually upgrading to a much better service. The system we had, or the email, the backend of the email was, it was, I don't know, kind of the stone ages and it just was not good from a lot of different angles. So that's going to get all revamped in the upcoming year for security reasons amongst others. So that's an increase of a thousand. And then TRITech was up two point five thousand. That is the police software, IMC police software, and Chris might be able to tell you a little more about that. And then our NEGO was up five hundred.
I have a, so I have a question, so how do you feel the town is well protected for cybersecurity?
I do, I do. As far as backing up data, protecting the workstations within, have virus software, educating your users, which is probably the biggest thing to do for cybersecurity because most of it happens in a frozen email to the link that they click on. So if they learn better how to be aware of the threats and protect themselves. And we are offered through the state police, a free service to do training. We've run phishing campaigns where we intentionally send bad emails to see how many people click on them and, you know, remind them.
Pretty good.
Yeah, and I actually ran one at the beginning of December and nobody clicked on it. Everybody, we got a perfect store across the board.
Well, that's great, and what about ransomware?
Joe, we're talking about phishing, not this phishing.
And that's what, that's connected to ransomware. That's about, I think it's eighty percent to seventy percent of ransomware spreads by email links that people click on. So I think that that's the most important.
You think we're well protected as a town, well backed up, so that we don't have...
And that's part of, I'm in the middle of writing a statute of recovery plan that will ensure our data is replicated off-site as well as on-site.
Can you cloud?
No, actually, I'm going to put the device at the police station in one year. We do have cloud backup as well, but I don't want to blow my license and contacts.
I can't even remember where our email is, but does it end in G O V?
It doesn't, but I was, that was brought to my attention actually by a resident about three months ago and I've put the wheels in motion to getting it dot G O V. It's actually given our contract services.
Yeah, so you can see that?
So that people will think that they're an official, an official government site because it has a G O V at the end.
So what somebody did in Exeter was, somebody just testing the system, was able to manipulate the system and purchase Exeter's dot G O V domain. And they did it just to prove a point, they didn't do it to do anything malicious, but they just kind of put it out there into all the security circles saying, this is possible. So if you are a municipality, it's better to dial out that dot G O V.
Domain.
Domain, even if you don't use it, as long as you own it, nobody else can buy it and masquerade as you.
That was my question, because I saw that on Channel Ten and I think out of the thirty-nine cities and towns, there are only six that are dot gov and all the rest are dot org. And I think they had this, the secretary, the treasurer, secretary of state, and she was saying, I think it's a three hundred dollar fee.
I got two hundred, they said four hundred, but I was saying...
Straight versus a grant. So it doesn't cost the towns, but they're suggesting all cities and towns change it to dot gov.
Oh, I'm in the process of doing it, I did, this just got brought to my attention and I made it a prior work. So the one he's talking about is basically upfront cost of getting it set up and a year of registration. After that, it'll be two hundred dollars a year to register, which I believe is a no-brainer, you know?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, thank you, glad you decided to stay.
Thank you. So C I P, and speaking of security, I think that's a good bridge for, because last year, last couple of years, we've kind of been picking away at some of these potential security issues. And this year, there's a couple items that...
And the eighty-nine hundred, is that, what is that going to be for?
So there's the backup appliances, that the data storage units themselves at home will be here in my closet, home will be in the police station. All data from the town is backed up to these and they replicate with each other. So it's a perfect copy at each place, so that, you know, if something were to happen environmentally here that would make that stuff inaccessible, I would have a perfect copy over there in my storage.
And when you say eighty-nine?
It's not just for that.
Eight thousand nine hundred.
Yes.
It's down, I don't want the folks at home to think we're talking about eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Eight thousand nine hundred, yes, four items, and then there's the firewall renewal.
Yep, that's a three-year renewal on our firewall, which is our core protection. It expires in September, two of our firewalls, we have two that are covered now because somehow the schedule of the renewals got kicked. But that's for three years, I mean, I can always go lower, but I'm just thinking by the three years and we're protected. It's always got us right.
Who's getting the desktop, five-week desktop?
They're actually, all the department heads right now have computers that are eleven years old.
Wow.
And those are the spot, so I would just like to bring those up.
So I have a question on the desktops. As a council, we are on the desktops, and I know we've talked about that in the past, possibly getting...
Laptops.
Laptops, laptops, sorry, I'm not computer savvy. But I don't know where that stands. I'm okay with paper, but I know that that's something that people do.
I worked for the schools in North Texas for a long time and we gave all our school committees iPads. And I did notice as they were using them, they started to get pushed to the side. And it just keeps a regular paper in this.
Maybe the next generation. Yeah, thank you.
I think iPads are good for college students to take notes while they're in class.
Reading books.
Yeah, reading books are good.
The last item was a new server for the town of Allt.
So that, the core of any Microsoft Windows network in a business like this has a thing, a server called the domain controller, which controls all user accounts and security connections. The way it's set up now is not best practices, it's a virtual machine on the server, which means it runs as a separate instance on a host server, but that host server relies on services that that virtual machine provides. So when the server's restarted, that virtual server doesn't start again for another five minutes, so it causes a bunch of problems. It's just something that's been bothering me since I got here and I figure it might as well get taken care of because it's not best practices.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I just have one question. Is that just one domain controller?
Yes, so this will make you two, I would keep the original one, you know, I would have this one. It's just like that hardware, but I mean, a domain controller.
So that'll make a second, yeah.
And that's a redundancy.
By the way, I'm the one who alerted you to the...
To the dot gov, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
That's good of you, thank you very much.
I, cybersecurity is my business.
Oh, okay, excellent. Thank you.
Want to volunteer?
The two sources here, please, so you're going to get those new, right? So how often will those get backed up, nightly?
I will do it, I'll do a full, what would be a full backup once a week and then incremental backups sort of.
And so when that's backed up, just, I assume that all gets encrypted, so, right? So even though it's backed up, it's imperative.
It's not over a secure program. And then, like I said, then they would relocate between the pieces that are on there.
Very good, thank you. We're coming into the twentieth century, keep going screaming.
Any other questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris, I do.
Good night, Chris.
Anyway, my question is, are we going to put more money in the trees removal?
Are you talking about C I P? Well, that's up to the town council. Basically, I talked to Tim Teft and Dave Caswell last week and Stanley Tree, they're hired by National Grid. They're still in town, not on a regular basis, but on and off. So they're still taking down trees, as is D E W. Of those thousand dangerous trees, we're probably pretty close to around three hundred or so right now.
Three hundred done or three hundred left?
So it's, we're up to about three hundred right now and it hasn't cost the town a nickel. Why they like to come down here is we provided them with two flaggers, so they don't have to pay for those. So they like that, so they can down here quite a bit. Now, hopefully, what we can do is continue them working until at least June thirtieth. And then after that, we're going to have to make a decision. We still have seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars in that account. We can use that for next fiscal year to start off with, you know, for the next six months. If the council wants to put more money in there, they can do that. But I think that with that seventy-two five and what we've already done already, by the time the next year and a half is over, we'll be pretty close to like five hundred trees that have been removed.
Are we also reminding people that if the trees are on their property, that maybe they should think of taking them down? Because some people can afford it, and I know they're waiting for National Grid to take them down because they're near poles, but they're on their property.
Well, we don't take down trees on...
I know, I know, I know we don't, but I have people, I know people who have trees, it's private property, they're right next to the wires and the lines, they're dead and they're not taking them down.
Well, I think what we do is, working with National Grid and their tree company, is that, you know, we approach the people and explain to them, you know, it's their obligation, their responsibility. But if those branches are hanging over the lines, you know, they're generally more than glad to let National Grid and Stanley Tree do that work and remove. Number one, they're not going to lose electricity, and number two, it's not costing them any money. So we've had, we've had pretty good luck with the trees on our private property, which if they don't want to come...
I'm just, I just wanted to know that you're continually reminding people that if it's private property, they really need to take their trees down. Because some of the trees that I've seen that are dead, they don't have the wires, limbs going across the wires. They're literally clear of the wires, but they're solidly dead and relatively close and they're sort of waiting for National Grid to do it. But my problem is that those are private trees and National Grid, I'm sure, will do eventually, maybe...
If it falls on a wire.
Exactly, exactly. And I gather it don't follow the wire. So I, I'm just happy that you're telling people, these are your trees, you need to take them down. As best...
I mean, if the council wants to put more money in the C I P, they can do it, but that seventy-two five, the C I P, that was over for three years. So we can still use that money after July first to do what we're not doing.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that initial allocation that we authorized was for a hundred trees.
Right.
Something like that, so, which grid took care of.
It happened to be the worst of the worst, right. But I think that also had to be that, you know, public works identified exactly where the trees are, by pole, what street. Towns haven't done that. Not every town's done that.
We've physically marked those streets.
Yeah, they could come down here and know what to do. So isn't it likely they're going to continue to do that?
I think that they would, yeah.
Yeah, because it is their responsibility. We were worried that, because it's the whole state that they cover, that they wouldn't be able to get here and we didn't have money in the budget and it comes to the point where you think it's an emergency, even if it's someone else's responsibility, maybe you better take it down and through your direction and others, they're able to come down here.
And we have three tree companies on master price agreement with the state of Ireland. So we'll just bring all three of those in and interview them and try to get the best price out of them.
If you have to.
If we have, yeah. Well, we'll have to do that, if we're going to spend that seventy-two five, we're going to have to, we're going to have to interview those companies. There are, you know, we, we don't want to just pick one.
Oh, we don't, it doesn't look like we'll have to.
We're going to interview them and try to reduce their prices.
Right, it doesn't look like we'll have to use the money. Just like we thought we were going to before and then they came down and started picking off those under trees, we didn't have to spend the money. So hopefully in the future, it'll be the same, it'll be the same.
It's going to be kind of like a waiting seat.
Yeah.
I mean, if they're coming down during the summer and really going with Tom, taking down trees, we're just going to hold off.
Oh, yeah.
Because we don't want to be paying and cutting the trees while they're cutting the trees.
Well, is Stanley being paid by the state or is by National Grid or...
Right now, Stanley's been in the area and they compensate it by National Grid. National Grid outsources all that tree work to the tree companies. Northeastern Tree, Stanley Tree, Long Tree.
Overall, the town's done a good job with what we've had the problems with. And I think we have the money in the budget.
They have a vested interest, let's hear it. They have a vested interest in making sure the line's clear.
So, at this point, you think that we would have, we have three hundred trees taken down now?
We, yeah, it's got to be pretty close enough by now.
And, and you think we would have five hundred done by a year and a half?
Well, if we, if they continue, it depends on if they continue working really, to be quite honest with you. But I would certainly say at least one hundred. And that was like a projected ten-year, long-term project.
Right, that's great.
And, you know, by a couple of years, two and a half years, we could have half of them done.
I mean, I think it's moving along as smoothly as you can possibly expect. So if we can just revisit it every year and see where we are?
We don't, we don't want to spend town money until we get home.
Yeah, until we have to.
I agree.
But it's sitting there.
Seventy-two, so that's good. Okay, yeah, the only C I Ps for police, but we'll wait for them to, sort of, they're here, so. All right, that wraps it up. I guess, Brian, maybe we can touch upon the new developments that happened at the school committee and what that potential impact might be?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so that, Sharon, myself, or Bill, or...
Yeah, I heard about it.
But, but the thing, I was just trying to tell them, if they were kind so hard to get to it, six hundred, seventeen dollars for a night, you know, if they reduced the...
Fun balance.
Fun balance, another half a percent, they could have cut all these things. That was my point, I wasn't trying to make them go bigger than a million and two. I was trying to help them get to a million and two without having to have...
Get those cuts.
Yeah.
But we like cuts.
But they didn't hear me.
Because the cuts are in there.
I know.
So cutting is better.
I know, but I, but I, but I just, they were, they were.
They purposely skipped over.
Yes, they skipped over.
I'm used to the shuffle, but you're not, you're getting used to it, and and it's a terrible shuffle, and it just, they skip right over, it's frustrating, and.
Which is why I was there until I opened the club.
Oh, I know.
So let's, let, I'm a person who wasn't there, and let's say something really good about it. I wasn't there, but they cut over eight hundred thousand dollars in expenses, which has, I I don't know when that's ever happened. But they, and that the finance director did her due diligence.
It's more than daily.
And and she went to the market heads and principals and talked to them about their budget and said, you know, when you cut, where can you cut?
Oh, I know, I agree.
And so I just want you to know that I've never seen that.
And they never seen me either, because they were.
Budget since nineteen ninety, so, so I appreciate that, and I, and and that is, what they've done is wonderful, it really is wonderful.
They still get a little bit to go on the fund balance, but.
And the fund balance, if it's a two-point, you can move it to.
It went to two quarters.
It went to two last year.
Well, they don't need, they don't need that fund balance.
You have any reasonable, two and a half is reasonable.
Oh, I don't think two and a half is reasonable, I think.
Well, well.
Frankly.
So you have like zero.
Because it's two percent of sixteen.
Please, please.
I mean, you know, it's not.
It's increasing the quiet, it's a bit. I I agree with you, I totally agree, I I know how they are.
The towns have their own.
Am I right?
But I thought last year they got down to two percent.
They did, they worked with two.
They could do it again.
Well, again, but you 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 have to witness the the obsession with the fund balance, they skip over it, they purposely don't.
I I think that one of the reasons they skip over is that they may, they may think that if it's voted down, that's a place they can cut. But personally, I think we should cut at the beginning instead of.
Why go through all that?
Why go through?
I, but who was, who was the the really short woman who looks like, when she's standing, she looks like she's.
Sitting, yeah.
Where did she come from?
Richmond.
Okay, so she was the one who told them that you don't need to necessarily kind of thirty-two, people will accept.
Well, she doesn't understand.
I I was like, how can you say that?
Especially for Richmond, Richmond's having the same problem too.
Right, so, anyway, it was interesting.
So so the reductions on that night were eight forty-one, zero, six, one.
Right, which was three hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred twenty-two dollars to Hopton, which further reduced our bill rate by thirty-two cents, which gets us down to eighteen forty-five.
And where is that?
That would be.
So page four, Sharon.
Well, look, so just at those, the updates I have in this, in your budget, um.
Don't reply.
I had to give them to you like last Friday.
Oh, that's right.
It'll be reflected in the next version, because I just not got the update, so I'm gonna make that change to the current.
So it's gone to eighteen forty-five?
Correct.
From from eighteen seventy-seven.
Yeah, on the new one.
I I put the new one in, so instead of.
So we're talking about twenty-sixty-eight.
It's gonna, twenty-sixty-eight was last year, so it's eighteen forty-five.
And what was it, what was that?
Eighteen seventy-seven.
Right.
Yeah.
I I thought per penny, I know it it was before about eighty-five hundred, I thought it was like thirteen-five per penny.
It is.
Based on that six, remember that six cent reduction we had from the last meeting?
Yeah, no, each, so.
I just divided that.
No, it's it's almost ten thousand now.
Oh, okay.
So point oh one, yeah, it's a one penny, because I I made myself a calculator here. Um, yeah, it's, it's nine thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars per cent, per penny, I'm knowing.
Okay, so three fifteen.
And the, um, tax levy total will be.
It's thirty-one cents, right?
Yeah, the the tax levy total is nineteen million five seven one nine eight nine, that's gonna be minus that three hundred and fifteen, three twenty-one. That really changed that.
Yeah, yep, yeah, so, um.
Fifteen.
Yeah, I I, are you looking at the real property intangible tax levy line? Yes, it will be.
Reduced by three one five, three two one, something like that.
Well.
Three two two, yep.
It would have three.
Three one, three fifteen thousand.
And so more importantly, right, so with that reduction, that, um, reduces the amount over the tax levy cap, right?
To about.
A hundred and twenty?
Uh, a hundred and eight, including the cuts from last budget workshop.
Oh, okay, a hundred and eight, so, so what that means is we can take money out of the savings account if we wanted to, to avoid petitioning the order general for an increase above four percent.
But she's still gonna be paying more than four, right?
Uh, not if you do take the money from the savings account.
Yeah, yeah, generally, you know, the last.
What do you mean, we have to take money out of our fund balance?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, we'll, we can look at, usually we'll go through the budget process and then at the end, evaluate where the fund balance is, and what you guys wanna do.
Yeah, okay.
We always use a fund balance to a certain degree, as long as it's a safe amount, yeah, because we, over the last twelve years, we've built that all the way back up to where it's supposed to be, correct?
Frank?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to comment about that, the school budget, and, you know, when I was looking at the agenda, you know, we kind of skipped over a fund balance that was up in the front, and saying.
Like number three?
The games are gonna start now, and to Sylvia's point, where it was nice of them to reduce that budget by X amount of dollars, but I think it just proves how much fluff is in that budget to begin with.
Nineteen positions.
When you, and when they eliminated, one line item had, I believe, was six custodial janitors.
Six summer custodians.
Custodians.
To paint the rooms.
Why do you need six, you know, I mean, there's so much fluff, and when you, you know, work with budgets, you could go through there and and get more.
Did you, did, were you there for the twelve thousand dollars, a thousand dollars per teacher to teach at?
No, I think it was mentoring or something.
Yeah, back to the mentor each other.
Yeah, 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 on top of the ninety-five thousand salary.
I left halfway through when they were going line by line by line. Yeah, but you know the thing is, and I haven't intended any of these, but the problem with the charitable, whatever the budget is adopted, when it's adopted, they have all these line items transferred, so the charitable budget, it's only the bottom line. You know, in November of twenty twenty, they they're gonna have, or whatever during the whole fiscal year, the next fiscal year, they're gonna be moving those line items around, the only control you have is the bottom-line budget.
Yeah, but see, this is the first year, because I knew that they did that. I thought, you know, because because she actually, you know, their budget showed what adjustments they had made versus the budget that was passed.
Right.
And I was like, oh, really?
But I all, I know the media, media con will put that, because the media should educate people more on what the the facts are and the procedural type of stuff. And I know a lot of people criticize me for getting, uh, look up on that, but you know, just like you have, the annual budget vote is the only way that you have any control over the school committee. All they can concede with them, and they might give you a million or whatever, but that's that's power, when you have the extra power to vote and stop something. Boy, if we were a single, uh, a single school district like West Philly, and House of says, this is what you're gonna get, make it work, but we don't have that power, the only power we have is stopping that crack team in April.
So Frank, you have a list of employees' power positions?
Positions.
Did you provide those to the council?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I wanna copy that.
Yeah, I'm on your card.
Another thing I would like to say.
From the meeting, remember they gave us all the positions, all the budget cuts of one point two million, and how many, we only got positions. It was nineteen positions in there.
Thanks for. Yeah, but I also anticipate is that, you know, many years I've been asking outside the office, but that's freeing to uphold what I've been saying for years. And then we have a message from Charleston, I understand, Donna Cambridge, who objects to an outside meeting, because they know we're gonna spend money, so.
There's a couple people that don't mind.
That's the problem.
Well, they need to find, we need to really strongly suggest that they find.
Is this with?
And we need to probably also present some other, um, potential people to to bid on it, because Elaine Morgan's list was not actually.
It's only one.
Well, you know, I I think we, you gotta give Senator Morgan credit, because she's a state senator, she's not a town official, and she took it upon herself to do that.
But Barack Kennedy has two to make sure we have transportation costs, and he's the one who supports that and gets that every year. So I I think that they are doing a good job, all of them, they're working hard in the, that's good.
Right, I'm just saying, you know, obviously they. They don't mind one out of all of those.
Saying to Morgan, those who are in transportation costs, how have they ever played out with her?
You know, I'm sure she has, well, so does Senator Al Geer, actually, and he's not even from Hopton.
But.
So anyway, so, yeah, so with the lower mill rate, it had a house value of three hundred thousand, I mean, the current scenario, with the tax rate of twenty-sixty-eight versus the new scenario with your assessed value went up seventeen percent at the new mill rate of eighteen forty-five, it's about two hundred and seventy-one dollars more per year.
Instead of five hundred and ten, huh?
Yeah, yeah, it was, so it's getting, going down in the right direction, we just need a little bit more on the school side to be cut. And if they reduce that fund balance from three to two and a half, that'll, that'll, that'll bridge the gap, I think, so.
But because the, because the entire interest is the charitable.
My problem is, we really need to add money to take down the nineteen oh four, we need to be able to do that, and we, at this point, cannot do that, and I understand, but we need to be able to do that, and we can't the way the school budget is.
Right.
And that has to be dealt with.
Yeah, so, anything else, don't ask me, don't your keys?
I think it's not.
Questions?
Do you guys have any other questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, it costs me money, but you know, my friend.
Who?
The ones to turn around with the Polish, World War Two.
Oh.
Can we just turn it around, it shouldn't cost them a lot.
It's in its own place, I would.
No, but it's not. At the right. Just try to.
That's not a budget discussion, it's a, no.
Okay, all right. I'd like to, I'd like to put it on the, on the agenda, please. Thank you.
Oh, there's the original. I need, there's an extra down there, oh, I mean, oh, let's see, sorry.
Look at all the positions on page two.
Page two?
I don't know what these mean, math high school, point two one, I get point two people.
I know, I know, I have no idea.
A fraction of a person?
Point eight's on the other page.
I mean, the, you know, the problem is, is is how town government suffers, that how we could use and have more staff in this place.
We don't need more staff.
No, but I'm just, I'm talking about the town.
We don't need more staff.
We don't need more staff, I'm down.
We're doing fine.
Yes, we're doing very well.
Oh, we do need one, we need a C D L.
What's that?
So, don't need a official.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, well, that's not more staff.
That's for more staff.
Oh, we need that, that's a replacement.
That's a.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, our our new hires have replaced us. Yeah, right.
Exactly.
But we need one.
Check.
We need.
Is he losing him?
No, I think, as I'm trying to say, there's a lot of things that need to be done in this town, and charitable always takes precedence.
Right, and we have some things that are actually school-related, like the nineteen oh four, that needs to take precedence, and we don't have any.
Any, any other questions on the budget tonight, just a?
Uh, it's really not on the budget, um, to Bill's point about the building official, and I'm sure other people are aware of it. When you drive through town, I mean, you can go up here, take a right, go by the police station, start to go down on the right-hand side, there's a mobile home there. He must have twenty twenty-five cars and trucks, he's pulling motors out of the vehicles, they're parked on the road, or it's a hazard to get through there. Uh, I went through Sweet Valley Estates the other day looking for damage, and there's someone, they're out behind the fence, has a couple of backhoes, an excavator, you know, all kind of equipment in yards, and I don't know if that's something where, you know, the building officials would would be on top of something like that, I know Sherry does the best she can, but he's shorthanded it, and further down the road, a resident where there's four or five plumbing trucks out front, you know, where obviously they're running a business. And I don't have anything against business, but when you see junk vehicles, Jason Teff's property, he had fifteen or twenty vehicles, he went in there and had someone clean up that whole piece of property, get rid of all of the junk vehicles that are in there.
I think if you make, if you make the building official aware, he will go and look, and he will send letters.
Well, you have to submit a form.
Yeah, right.
And I think you may know some of those already, and they're already progressing on them.
I know a number of letters went out recently.
That's right, a number.
Oh, really?
About, and I remember it was that one.
And they've gone out before as well, so it just takes a very long time to give people plenty of time in order to try to correct their problems, they don't.
Anything else?
We have to, I think, Marshall and Jerry.
Was there anything you wanted to?